So we are back in the public committee of the hall meeting for September 12, 2024. I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the minutes of the committee of the hall for July 11. Someone want to make that motion for me? Counselor Devlin, seconded by Counselor Luceout. All in favor? Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Say none, I'm going to go right into delegations and presentations. We have the Rebelstoke Boxing Club here today to do a presentation. So you'd like to come up to the podium, please? Yeah, we'll do it at that time. Mr. Rose, your words.
Thank you. Dear Mayor and Rebelstoke City Council, my name is A.J. Rose. I'm the president and head coach of the Rebelstoke Boxing Club. I'm coming before you today to express the urgent need of a new location for the Rebelstoke Boxing Club. For the past year, the club has struggled to relocate since the eviction from the city of Rebelstoke's property on Powerhouse Road after the building was deemed unsuitable for occupancy. The affordability and increased density of Rebelstoke has made relocating to a suitable location almost impossible for a nonprofit such as ours. We strive to offer the most affordable sports option in Rebelstoke. Our club is completely volunteer run. We provide all the necessary equipment to participate, and we focus on ensuring that anyone, no matter the state of their ability to afford sports and activity, are welcome in our club. Rebelstoke has a long history of boxing. Our club has existed for over two decades, and before us, Hertz Spidel Senior operated a club for multiple decades. We have achieved a bronze medal at the Canadian Nationals, a silver medal at the B.C. Golden Gloves, two provincial championships, multiple bronze gloves championships, and three provincial championship contenders. And we also won Boxing Club of the Year for B.C. in 2012. Boxing and our club in particular has had an immeasurable positive impact on the lives of many of the people in Rebelstoke. We provide an opportunity for everyone to develop confidence, courage, and determination. We don't achieve this simply by providing training classes, but by providing an environment, a positive environment, and giving the opportunity to individuals to promote themselves. For an individual, it can be daunting to walk through the door of a boxing club. Many people will expect to find rough and aggressive people, but when they walk through our door, they find a welcoming environment with many other people just like them. Our membership consists of mostly recreational members, people looking for a challenging, affordable, community-building activity. I would like to share two quick stories of a couple of members that we had recently, in recent years. A story, the first story, of a 14-year-old boy struggling with body image issues and bullying. He came in terrified and practically pushed through the door by a family member. In a few cases, in a few classes, he became one of our most happy and talkative members. This wasn't by putting him through intense and brutal exercises, but by being inclusive and encouraging. He could feel like he could better himself at his own pace and join in with a group of people looking for the same thing as him. The second story is of a 21-year-old foreign worker suffering from extreme poverty. He wanted to be a boxer because his late father was a boxer. He never missed a class unless he had to work. Not only, but not only myself, but also the other members of our club pitched in to ensure he always had the opportunity to join in. We never forced him to pay for attendance, and he paid when he could. These are just two of the many stories that regularly occur behind the door of the Rebelstoke Boxing Club. We have asked that our membership and the boxing community abroad write letters of support to help better understand of what boxing and the Rebelstoke Boxing Club means to our community. After a year of desperately searching for a new location, it has become clear to us that the city of Rebelstoke is the only entity with the capability to ensure the continuation of the Rebelstoke Boxing Club. We ask that you please consider a request so that we may keep boxing alive in Rebelstoke. Thank you. And I submitted the letters and the request in the delegation.
Sure. So with the delegation, we listen, now we're going to ask questions, and then later on in our agenda, the letters that we discuss at that point. So A.J., approximately how many members of the regular or of the boxing club? And then how many people are like drop-ins, that sort of thing? Do you have any idea of that?
Generally, we produce around 40 members. We operate currently solely on drop-in.
Well, okay.
Yeah. It allows us to keep prices affordable. We are completely volunteers, so if we're, if we ever can't attend a class for whatever reason, we didn't want people missing out on that canceled class, so they wouldn't be paying for a class that wasn't being held. So that's why we decided to go with the drop-in form.
And then when we talk about a facility, space that you need, what are you looking for? And I'm not talking about a particular building, I'm talking about, you know, approximately how many square feet? And what, what would that do? Because I'm understanding that you're looking for a place where you could put a boxing ring and it stays up, and I'm not familiar with the size of that sort of stuff.
Yeah. As a square footage, we need probably an absolute minimum of 1,000 square feet. We don't currently own a boxing ring.
Okay.
We have to sell our ring to make it through the COVID period when we weren't generating any income. A boxing ring isn't necessary to running boxing classes.
Okay.
When we were in the location on Powerhouse Road, we were able to build a small training-style ring, so much smaller than a competitive ring, but adequate enough to create the environment of a boxing ring.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel, any questions from Mr. Lou Rose? Counselor Luceout?
Thank you, commercials. When it comes to your participants, how frequently do you guys host classes and meet? And what is kind of the timeframe that you guys meet throughout the week?
We host, on average, seven classes a week. Generally, the classes are between an hour to an hour and a half long. We have, or before we were out of a location, we were running two general open classes for ages 13 and up, two ladies' open classes, two teen girls' classes, and then one class for groups or private lessons for any group that may be interested.
And what time of the day were these happening at?
Generally, in the evening, so most of the time, from 4:00 P.M. starting to 7:00 P.M. start classes. So my classes started at 7:00 P.M. The other coach, Jessica, her classes would start at 4:00 P.M.
And when these run during the week or over the weekends?
During the week, so Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays.
And would you be looking for a space that you can leave equipment set up? Or would there be the ability to move equipment in and out of a closed storage space?
There is the ability to move equipment on sort of a more looser basis. If it was up and down every single night, that would propose a significant challenge. We do provide classes to people not necessarily physically strong enough to lift a heavy bag. So, but we could take them down, say, once a week pretty easily. We could probably do a bit more, but doing it, removing equipment every single night would be a challenge.
Okay.
Not impossible, but definitely a challenge.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, thank you, thanks, A.J. You did well. The, how many typically, what would be sort of an average for the classes? How many people are in?
Our classes tend to average around eight people per class. I did bring my attendance book if you'd like to look in to it. But yeah, generally, eight people per class. I've taught classes. Our record is 23 in a class. We'll quite often see a class of 16 people. Some days, it slows down in summer months, so we'll tend to see maybe, you know, a three-person class in the summer.
Other questions?
No, that's good, thanks.
Counselor Lander, do you have any questions?
Your worship, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, A.J. As the mayor mentioned, we'll discuss it again further down on the agenda and perhaps hear from staff or potentially request a report. I do know that there have been multiple requests for use of the Century Valen buildings over the years and for various reasons, they haven't been supported so that, including condition of the building and other uses, but we'll see what happens there. You know, I remember going to boxing club in Begbie, Mount Begbie School Gym. It was just an awesome facility and an awesome time. And obviously, having a better facility like that helps. The club has not had a, you know, great facility like that for a while, so that's going to bring challenges. Another detail I wanted to mention, although it is many years off, there is a representative on the new multi-sport facility committee looking at options for including all types of martial arts and activities like boxing. But I just have to say that is many, many years in the future and still an if at this point. Yeah, and I just encourage, thank you for the presentation and all you do, and I encourage you to stick around for further discussion further down on the agenda.
Any other questions from counselors? Say none, thank you, Richard. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on in the agenda. On my initiative update from economic development. Cat, you're gonna?
I am. Well, thank you for having me, your worship and counsel. I'm just going to give you a bit of an update on where we are with the current resort development strategy, which runs from 2022 to 2024. And most of my numbers are just inclusive of 2023 to kind of show you our accomplishments to that point. So here we go. And many of you are familiar with the Resort Municipal Initiative Program, so that's the RMI. There's 14 of us in B.C. that participate in this program. And then every year, we must complete a multi-year resort development strategy. So that's that three-year strategy. Our next one will be coming up for 2025 through 2027. So how it works, again, largely you are quite familiar with this program. So the RMI program, where we delegate funding each year, is guided by the resort development strategy itself. And that's that three-year strategy. And then it's based off of the MRDT, so the municipal regional district tax that we collect and that tourism Rebelstoke helps us manage. So it's based off the 2% rate that they collect. I know we are in a 3% collection zone, but that's, the RMI program only bases it off the 2%. And then we get additional performance-based lists after that base funding has been established. So that comes every year after we submit a report and after the MRDT report has been submitted for that year to see how we performed. So that's based off of how much MRDT growth we've had over the year. So in total, the program budget's around $13 million, but that's for all of our 14 resort municipalities. And the intentions of the program, so we want to build and diversify tourism infrastructure, deliver exceptional visitor's experiences, and incorporate sustainable tourism practices and products. So some of the key outcomes, increased visitation and visitor activity, increased private investment, increased municipal tax revenue, increased employment opportunities in the community, and increased tourism contribution to the local economy as well. So here's kind of a graph of where we've come from and where we are now. So 2008 was the first year of the program, and it's climbed fairly steadily except for we had COVID. And in 2023, there was a bit of a dip. We did see lower visitation through the hotels in 2023 with the snow conditions and things like that. And then the forest fires last summer also, I think, contributed to some of those numbers being a little bit lower than kind of where we saw the growth originally going. So in 2023, we did about $1.478 million of funding gone out to the community. That was over 18 different community organizations that we helped support and 22 different projects. So we really like to spread around to lots of organizations in the community, give them a chance to run these great events, do arts and culture infrastructure and things like that. So first, we'll look at the infrastructure projects. So 2023 is on the left-hand side there of where we ended up with for our spending. And then on the right-hand side is where we are to date for the strategy, not including 2024, because we are still working through those bits. So that's for wayfinding, and we did a phase two of wayfinding. A lot of the signage was put up last summer. We have some water access projects, visitors experiencing arrivals, recreation trails, and infrastructure, and then arts and culture infrastructure as well. And I'll dive into what some of those kind of break out to in a minute, so you can have a look. Okay. So, infrastructure, I said wayfinding, so it was a lot of the downtown core was done in 2023. You'll see a lot of the city signage and directional signage there that was installed. There was a water access project over at Williamson Lake that we completed. So we've kind of like, the road was shifted and there was kind of like a flatter spot for parking and things like that. And that road alignment has to do with upcoming multi-use path that's eventually going to get put through there. And then we have some ribbon cutting. I know that wasn't in 2023, but the building of the Wooden Head Park washrooms, the majority of that happened in 2023, which was a really big accomplishment. We know they've been really busy. We're trying to find a way to capture that data. And then we had city park upgrades, such as the Frisbee Disc Golf Course over the Industrial Park, which is also part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, so that was completed last year. And then we're looking at recreation trails and amenities. So we do help a lot of our local clubs, recreational clubs, create new projects as well. So the Boulder Climb Trail was a big one for the RCA. We had the National Selection Tour for RMR, the Alpine Club of Canada, and the Silhouette Green Belt Society. And what I want to say to this piece is, while we give some funding from RMI, that also helps us leverage other funding for these organizations through like economic opportunity funds and things like that. So a lot of these groups, we do also help with that. So we kind of give them some seed money, and then they can help leverage that for other funding pieces as well. And then we have the arts and culture infrastructure. So Rebelstoke Outdoor Art Movement or ROM, they do their art gallery area on RMR. So they've been upping every year and putting new installations and things like that, so they have some great ones. The Heritage Railway Society, the Rebelstoke Museum and Art Crimes, we also help for projects with that. Last year, they were looking at a feasibility study for the Accessible Lift Project, which they've been working through. And then we have events, programs, and servicing. Luna's a really big one for us, Revy Live. So we contribute to those two events. And then Tours of Rebelstoke also provides matching funds, because those are really great events and we all find really great value, and the community as well loves those events. So we support those ones each year. The Interior Forestry Museum, Columbia Mountains Institute. We did the Upper Canoe Journey, again, Upper Columbia Canoe Journey, the Salmon Feast, a lot of those types of things. And just kind of keeps going. So we really support a lot of different organizations and their events, not just trying to focus on one, but trying to spread it out, because we know that arts and culture and event programming is extremely valuable, not just to tourism, but the community also gets a lot of value from that as well. And then looking forward to the future. So like I said, the current RDS ends this year, and we have to start planning for the next one, so 2025 to 2027. And with that, we need to be looking at the Parks and Rec Master Plan, the Transportation Master Plan, the Tourism Five-Year Strategic Business Plan, and the Destination Management Plan, and making sure we're aligning the new RDS to match and bolster like what those plans are doing. And then we also look for the Backcountry Recreation Plan, which is a CED initiative, and the cultural planning. I want to make sure we incorporate all of those pieces into the RDS so that we can allocate funding and support the growth on those areas. And we also leverage a lot of external funding, such as the Economic Opportunity Fund, and there's provincial and federal funding that we also try to seek to help to leverage a lot of this stuff. And the provincial and federal funding fit a lot into the capital projects, the main infrastructure projects that we do, so we can guarantee some funding for those projects. And then like engineering department can take that funding and say, hey, let's apply for this grant, because now we have matching funds or finding a percentage that they need to be able to contribute on our side. So that's been extremely helpful with things like the multi-use paths. And other pieces of the future planning, looking at the financial side, keeping in mind that the capital projects with the increased cost of construction, we've been really keeping our eye on that to make sure we're not overextending ourselves and managing projects appropriately, but still having funding to provide to our external organizations to help them with the events and their infrastructure. The administrative part, we get about $10,000 right off the top each year to help with the administrative of the program. So report writing, creating the RDS, and things like that from my department. But then we also have used that to leverage economic opportunity funds to help support the CED department in trying to manage that administrative piece, because it does take a lot more time each year. The bigger the spending, the more capital projects, it just takes more time. So we do get some contribution towards wages and things like that. And then the performance measurements and data collection for the next RDS, we really want to make sure we're hitting realistic performance measurements and coming up with new creative ways to get the data for like usage of people attending events or how many people use the Wooden Head Park washrooms, like that kind of stuff. So we're trying to be creative and trying to figure out how to collect that stuff and make sure we actually get those numbers, because a lot of it's just guessing, but want to come up with some creative ways to actually get that, like a little bit more prescribed data. And that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Moffett? Counselor Palmer, go ahead.
Thanks. I just sighed because, just because. Good presentation, clear, follow it. I do have a question regarding, so we had the long list of those projects. Can you very, very briefly describe how that is subscribed to in the decision-making process?
Yes, for, aside from the city capital projects, we do have like the recreational infrastructure, the arts and culture infrastructure, and the events pieces. So we have a tourism initiative committee, which is a committee of council. So I send out an email to all the organizations that would be looking for funding or who have applied in the past, letting them know that we're taking applications. They fill out a form, and then that comes back to me. And then I put it in order depending on if it's an event or if it's arts and culture infrastructure. And then I present that to the TIC committee, and then we sit there and we review them. And we just go through with a fine-toothed poem of like, who have we supported in the past? What's the value that we see? Even though the community loves a lot of these events, we do have to look at the tourism value of that as well to make sure it is a tourism-facing event, because those are part of the qualifications in the resort development strategy that has to fit. So we do go through that committee, and then they make a recommendation, which we then bring to council, and then you guys give the final, okay, if that's what we want to do, and then that's kind of how that happens.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Follow-up, Counsel?
Yes. Backcountry recreation access, so that's been a sort of hanging thing and might be a little bit of a difficult question. I guess the skinny is, are we going to get it done? And I'm not trying to put a kind of a pressure, but it's a long standing. So can you just give a perspective?
Yes, yes.
It's a tricky one, I recognize.
For sure. We did complete the State of the Backcountry Report, I believe it was two years ago, it was right before I came into CED. So that was done. We do have a GIS map. I'm working with Amanda in GIS and IT currently to just come up with a plan of how we're going to let user groups access that and what that should look like. And we have been having conversations with some other user groups about this. So I think part of the plan before was to come up with some sort of a trail alliance. So that's kind of our next step of seeing like, how do we move that forward? It needs to be kind of organic with some of the groups, but we are circling back to that. I'm working closely with Dale Toma, our indigenous liaison, on that stuff to see when that's going to kind of come back around and how we can actually get that moving forward. The more information we have and the sooner we can get like trail alliances, then those user groups will also be able to apply for more funding as a group, as an alliance, or whatever they may come to be called. It actually gives them way more leverage, so they'll be able to support more of their own initiatives as well. So it's there, it's one of our key files. As our new director, Ryan, kind of gets filled in and learns what's going on, what our files are about, we can start taking a bit more direction with that piece. But yes, it's still, it's still there.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mayor Sosa. I think kind of my sort of general point on that is we're very fortunate in Rebelstoke, because in general, our community, the bigger community, kind of knows the plane. So if you talk motorized versus non-motorized kind of activities. But as we throw those pressures and then potential conflicts, so it's important to get. And then the other thing, it just reminded you, I think about five, probably about five years ago, maybe four or five years ago, there was an outcry about development on Mount Begbie. And so there was a decision to put it off for five years, and I think we're, we're almost there, yeah. Thanks.
Counselor Church?
Thanks, Mayor Sosa. Cat, I was hoping to ask you some questions that I don't think were answered in the slides. There was a slide that showed how much, what the RMI has brought into the community over the last 15 years or so. I'm curious how much money has been collected for the province in that time by our community?
That is something we were looking, trying to figure out last year. I was working with Steve Black, and we were trying to come up with what those numbers really were, trying to get that information. It's been a bit difficult. I did reach out to the province, like our funder, for this program to try to get more information. I'm not sure where we landed, I have to circle back with Steve to see where we ended up with that conversation. But that was, yeah, we were having that conversation last year, trying to figure that out, for sure.
We kind of have an idea that with all 14 of the RMI communities, the first two weeks of the year is basically what we get back, then it goes to the province.
So we're their cash cow?
Yep.
That's unfortunate. Leading towards some of the other questions. Oh, let me just slide back. Oh, I lost it, sorry. The key outcomes, increased municipal tax revenue and diversification of municipal tax-based revenue. Just to reg- Uh, just in regards to those, uh, there seems to be a misunderstanding by the general population of what projects can be funded by RMI. I'm wondering if you can try to better define that. And there also seems to be an issue on how each community is able to fund different capital projects with the same funds.
See where you're going. Um, I don't have all your answers.
It's fine. I mean, it's beautiful, so.
Currently, the way the RDS reads, the resort development strategy reads is whatever the amenity is, like a capital project that we're building has to be visitor facing. Like that is the primary piece. So we're looking at like multi-use paths, the wooden head park washrooms. Um, there's parts on Williamson Lake, I think one of the Washington buildings was done like in the campground piece. Um, so it needs to be visitor facing infrastructure.
If I could give an example from another community that I, I'm hoping staff can find an answer to at some point. Um, Interfeo, for example, they were able to pave the road to Mackenzie Beach. After forty years of saying it's gonna get done, but it seems like in this community, we're unable to get any capital infrastructure for roadworks like that outside of what happened at Williamson Lake. So I just want to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, for sure. And I know we are talking with the funder about eligibility criteria and stuff like that and other things that we could do. Um, I've been working with the director of finance a little bit and having conversations with the funder about trying to understand this a little bit better and where we could go because if we can change anything for the, in the next RDS, then we want that included at that time, but um, we're still having a little bit of a, a back and forth of discussion with that. So I, the funder has said currently that the RDS will still function the same way as it has before. So they're not looking to do any of these changes, but doesn't mean we can't keep asking the question and if we can figure out how to move a project so that we say that it is such, then maybe we could. So, but bigger scale, I don't know.
Perfect. That's really interesting. And then just on the arts and culture side, you know, the increased tourism contributions of local, uh, can you, I can, economy as a key outcome, um, can you just weigh in on uh, what the economic return is for every dollar that is invested into that? There was a, there was a number thrown around years ago and hopefully maybe you can confirm, uh, you get about $400 for every dollar that's spent on that industry.
I'd have to dig into that. I don't know off the top of my head.
I do apologize.
I wasn't prepared for that question.
I didn't mean to drop by.
Yeah.
Perfect. Now, I appreciate this uh, this presentation that you mentioned. I did ask things that were.
Testing. Yeah. It's good. It's good.
Any other comments from counsel? Counsel Palmer?
Yeah, I just can't resist the temptation. Uh, so the, the, I think the criteria is often, it's gonna be something that's goes into a kind of a gray area and it's how it's presented. I think Cat has a pretty, oh, that front-facing piece down and that's really important. Um, it, and you know, it may be advantageous to have a minister uh, that was a previous mayor perhaps that has inside his list. Yeah.
Good, a good point. And so uh, I've had conversations even as uh, late as uh, twelve this afternoon with another RMI member. And, and so we're continuing to meet on a regular basis and have conversations with the ministers to see how we as a group can get funding for more of these things. Because as Counsel Cherry's pointed out, you pointed out, some communities are able to get things. And as, as Ms. Moffett has said, if it's visitor facing, you seem to be more in tune with that. We look at that and go, somebody, infrastructure may not be directly visitor facing, but it's essential to be funded and may be able to be funded through this. So we're continuing to have those conversations. However, sometimes it feels like we're beating our heads a little. Counsel Orlando?
Uh, your worship. Thank you. And uh, thank you to Ms. Moffett for the presentation today. Uh, uh, much appreciated. Um, just uh, sort of more uh, following up to uh, some of the questions from counsel as well as response from staff. Uh, with staff's reference to the RDS, uh, the strategy. Um, and uh, our uh, sort of ongoing lobbying efforts or future lobbying efforts or uh, future uh, management of of program funding or wants for more to accuse it for other things. I, I, I feel that uh, a coordinated, long-term approach that uh, coordinates with all of our partners uh, in other resort uh, communities uh, will likely be the most fruitful in the end. I, I know we've uh, taken numerous approaches for the years, numerous, numerous approaches over the years as have other communities. Uh, and I think um, really just taking that long-term view uh, as we develop uh, these plans will lead to the most impact uh, and uh, fulfillment of our goals. But again, uh, Ms. Moffett, thanks for the presentation. I know you were meeting, for example, some of the questions were about arts today. The arts community working on future planning and uh, setting the stage for more success.
Great. Thank you. Any other last comments?
Uh, just further to that, Mayor Solz, I think it's good for the community to know that uh, for a long time, there has been regular meetings with the fourteen communities. And there is uh, uh, that partnership and it's in that, a lot of the success, because this has been very successful for all the communities. And uh, so that's a really important, and when, uh, further to Counsel Orlando, that when we collectively make those uh, just um, you know, have that contact and we make it, have much louder voice with the province regardless of who's in government.
Absolutely. And, and so we continue to meet as, as mayors of those RMI communities. We try to meet once a month uh, to go over our objectives as a group. And then I know our CAOs meet uh, a considerable amount of times over the years and usually get together in a certain community or another, once or twice a year. And then usually uh, CEOs and mayors meet with the ministers at UBCM. We spend a whole day uh, going through things. We're not gonna see that this year because of course the election is looming and not seeing the ministers come. So we'll, we'll probably have a couple hours of uh, of meeting as a group. But thank you for those comments. Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to ten B meeting dates. Uh, Ms. Boyd, comment?
Thank you, Mayor Solz. So back in um, last year when we brought these forward for council consideration for the 2024, they need to be approved by Council by the end of the year. Um, it was discussed in January of 2024 that council would like to have a more robust conversation about the meeting dates, um, including a poll to determine availability and preference. So this year, what I did was I took the calendar only including council and committee of the whole dates and put it all in one big picture so that council could look at it as a whole. So I guess um, this is just to start that conversation off. Counselor Stapenhurst did mention that it might be a good idea to go back over the meetings for council and committee of the whole and see who was able to make it, if there was like obvious areas where we uh, would be required to change meeting dates or times.
Okay. Uh, uh, I think that's great. I, I know just when I look at the schedule. And uh, daylight today, for example, uh, the third uh, third Thursday of the month is CSRD and usually committee of the whole. So uh, that means that I'm attending virtually at, at both meetings rather than being in person. So looking at what's gonna be the best for all. So if we can all take a chance or uh, time to uh, to look at this and then respond back as to what works. And uh, let's discuss this further at a subsequent meeting. Is that okay?
That would be great. Yes.
Okay.
Can I just make a great comment? The, so for the public infrastructure committee, we did discuss this and it's maybe a bit convoluted. Um, the dates in here are not reflective of my understanding of the public infrastructure committee.
Um, I think it just hasn't been updated.
Okay.
But yeah, the, the committee and commission ones, meeting dates have not been solidified. Partly because there weren't any meetings over the summer, so it will come forward at the next meeting. But having said that, if council chooses to change council meeting dates and times, the committee and commission will have to be adjusted too.
Yeah, absolutely. So just uh, for the council, Mayor Solz, what we were, there's more interest in the public infrastructure committee from other council members. And uh, so what's uh, as it stands right now, on the second Tuesday of each month, we have a council meeting in that same week. On the Thursday, we have the committee of the whole. And so what we're suggesting is on the after the, the fourth Tuesday of each month, uh, when the public infrastructure committee would be following close on the same alternating two weeks. So uh, for example, if you looked at the calendar on there, it would, in January, it would occur on the third. So it's the same pattern that we're seeing for the committee of the whole.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Yeah. Counsel Orlando and then Counsel Cherry?
Uh, your worship. Uh, uh, thank you. Um, just a quick question and then just a bit more of uh, expressing a view. Um, do we know exactly when we're going to discuss this? Again, we have to finalize it by the end, finalize our schedule by the end of the year. But when will be the time that we uh, address the question?
Do something next month?
Uh, I think it would be beneficial to do it sooner rather than later because the committee and commissions, they all need to approve their dates as well. So if there are major changes, we'll be pushed beyond our deadline in December.
So can we, as a group, do you feel comfortable in discussing this at committee of the whole in October?
Counsel Palmer? Yeah, I mean, so I'll, I'll just make a couple comments so that people are thinking about it. So I think really the, the major question as per the corporate officer is, are we leaving the same pattern that we had, that we've had in the past uh, for regular council meetings? So first. Right. And, and that's super important as the foundation. So if we're thinking about tinkering with that, then we should do it sooner rather than later. Personally, as an individual counselor, I'm, have the flexibility. I'll work with wherever we go. Um, the um, and then the second one is that committee of the whole, are we keeping the same pattern? And there may be, even as a fundamental question as to committees, other committees and the committee of the whole, the function, are we keeping that same pattern? So I think we should really solidify that uh, fairly quickly. So if we're prepared to get into it right away, then yeah, the next committee of the whole might be fine. The uh, the last, but there's one point that I, I would like to make. Uh, the, the cancellations of uh, meetings are very, very irritating. And so when we're looking at these, let's think about holidays, let's think about all these other things. And I know there has been some, but let's really think about it and do everything we can to avoid cancellation of meetings.
All right. Thanks for that point because I, I think that if we're gonna talk about holidays in the holiday season, whether that's uh, Christmas time or whether that's during summer, then let's plan that into our schedule now. So that, that's dealt with and then we know where we're going into. And then the public has a pretty good understanding of where we're at, but also so do we as far as planning our schedules. Yeah. Okay.
And then, then may, maybe if we're, if that's, if we're leaving this for later on, um, perhaps uh, individual counselors could relay uh, to a corporate officer either concerns on any of these matters. So that, so we have something to start with and we're not in the same place that we are today. I, I could do it right now, quite frankly, as well.
Counselor Cherry?
If I can, uh, not all of us have the same level of freedom.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
As everybody else, between kids, jobs, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, just so you guys know, what works best for me is a heavy week and then a light week. So I can actually do everything else I need to do. Uh, just something to consider while we're all working on what's best for everybody. That may not be what's best for everybody, but just putting that out there for me. Love to hear how your feelings.
So give me some example of what you consider.
Oh, heavy week, light week. So uh, right now we have every second and fourth. We have, we have a series of meetings. If committees mostly aligned on that as well, or we're heavier on those weeks, I have the ability to actually get work done outside of this role on the other weeks with full days, ten hour days, twelve hour days, not three hours.
Okay, good point.
Uh, just something to consider.
Counsel Orlando, you had your hand up and I'll go to Counsel Stapenhurst.
Uh, yeah, your worship. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My, one of my batteries is dying here and so uh, worried. Yeah, um, thank you. I'm happy to discuss it in, in a month uh, from now. Uh, I agree with Counsel Palmer, the sooner the better. Um, and if we could have a process of uh, counselors writing down their thoughts or, or suggestions, that would be great. I feel there's not, never going to be everyone agreeing on what the best schedule is. Um, my thoughts uh, is, um, you know, I like Counsel Palmer's suggestion of uh, trying to schedule uh, overlapping weeks on the, at the same time um, uh, of the weeks. Uh, you know, one of my main concerns is that um, with uh, committee of the whole uh, and council um, being on different days of the week, at different times of the week, that means you have to, people who work during the day have to adjust their schedule for those times. Um, and having them at the same time of the week allows for, for better scheduling. And I realize not everyone's gonna agree and everyone's schedule is gonna be different. Um, however, we do have policies in place uh, looking at uh, making the council role accessible and I think we need to consider that. And the other consideration uh, that uh, everyone uh, is, uh, faces on council is with lots of different committee, commission and um, liaison appointments for organizations across the community. There's all kinds of appointments going on every week. Uh, and it's often all over the map. So I feel that trying to synchronize uh, them uh, synchronize the meetings as best we can, the core meetings would be great. A final thing to note is as like the staff have discussed, a lot of the times uh, or some of the times the meetings um, are uh, historical artifacts, like there used to be another meeting and then this was two at two and this is why this is at three. So I think there is some option for alignment. So um, if we could uh, take it up a month from now and have dialogue in between that, that looks at scheduling, uh, that would be great. Um, and uh, just one last note, compliment to staff uh, over the past couple of years on getting these onto the team's agenda at the start of the year is a big help because uh, in the past, it was way harder to schedule. Uh, I'm sure everyone here has lots of multiple uh, overlapping schedules they're dealing with. So that makes it much easier. I'm looking forward to uh, doing that again in the next year.
Great. Thank you. Counsel Stapenhurst?
Um, yeah, I think maybe just to, just to add in, I really liked Counsel Cherry's suggestion about the heavy weeks versus the light weeks. Um, that's something that I would be in favor of. I'd also strongly, I'd like to see the option of starting these meetings earlier in the day rather than having them run late into the evenings because that impacts um, some of our ability to go home and have family time. Uh, and I think that's probably maybe a reason why we don't see a wider diverse range of people applying for council. So that's something to consider. Um, and then further to that, uh, maybe looking at the history of um, meetings in the summertime and, and you know, when staff are away on vacations. Um, you know, is it really beneficial to have meetings in August when, you know, X amount of staff are away and everybody else is on vacation and, and here we are. You know, we've all kind of anticipated these meetings in August, but they're not happening. Um, maybe we could just look at, you know, maybe taking a week off in, in, in August or July. Um, and same with, with this, the December meetings, you know, looking at that uh, December twenty-third. Um, we're going right into the Christmas vacation. Why, right?
Yeah. Good point. Good point. Thank you. All right. So we'll do that. Uh, Ms. Boyd, if you're okay, we'll talk about this a month from now and get input in the meantime.
Yes, I'll reach out um, in the meantime and get a baseline so that we can bring something forward at the next committee of the whole.
Perfect. Appreciate that. All right. We're gonna move on to uh, development cost charges, DCC update. Uh, Mr. Black, you and your colleague have uh, reached a consensus and are gonna set us up for success moving forward. Is that correct?
Thank you. Yes. Moving forward for success. Um, I'd like to introduce uh, Joel Shark, who's my mentor. Um, as a little bit of background, uh, we did an update to the public infrastructure committee meeting last week, which will be four. meeting last week, which will be four of your previous two. So we're going to do a quick summary for all of council and the public so that we can continue to push this project forward. And with that, no, I'll leave it with Joel.
All right.
Hey, Mayor Joel, you only have 15 minutes.
Yep. Okay. All right, yeah. So, thanks, Mayor and Council. I've got a brief presentation here, and I'll just talk a bit about some of the items we've got in the, in the presentation. So, um, we're not going to go over a lot of the background, like population projections, those types of things. We've had a number of conversations about those already. I'm going to focus mainly on projects and costs and the RAP DCC rates and the results of applying assist factors. Uh, and we're going to have some discussion on that. Then there's some comparisons and some foregone revenue and next steps. So in terms of the process and the timeline, we've got a five-phase process here. Um, we are at the end of phase three where we have the DCC calculations. And, uh, and as I mentioned in terms of the presentation, we're going to focus on the projects and the costs. So we reviewed all the recently completed, uh, master plans, uh, which provided excellent information for the development cost charge analyses. Uh, really great, up-to-date, uh, recent, uh, master plans. Uh, we updated the costs and most of the numbers that we used for the, uh, development cost charge calculations. Now, um, as we're going into the, um, into the actual projects and costs, we need to talk a little bit about benefit allocations. I'm not going to spend too much time on that, but basically a benefit allocation is you think about each project, and some parts of the project or some projects benefit both the existing and the new population. So when we do that, uh, we apportion that based on a number of different techniques. We do it based on population or sewage flows or water flows. But thinking about, and we do that project by project by project, to think about how much of this project uh, benefits the existing population, how much benefits the new. So it's, it's important because as we go along, we have a list of projects. It's a bit of a condensed list. There's a detailed version, the appendix of the report that you can, uh, look at. But we've got bridge connections, bikeway projects, multi-use projects on the street, non-street, walkway spaces on the street, intersection improvements and traffic coming. So those are all transportation projects. You can see at the bottom there that the total cost is, uh, 57.7 million. But when we've, uh, applied the benefit allocation, the cost allocated to growth is 19.7 million. So when we look at each project and say, how much of this project should be allocated to growth? It's, it's only a portion of the, uh, of the entire list. So, uh, so that's transportation, uh, quite a number of projects there. Uh, water, we've got some, uh, big project, the biggest one being the 20 degree transmission main. Uh, we've also got some treatment upgrades at the Gulf Course well, uh, some new wells, pump capacity, and constructing a new pipe and connections, uh, and upsizing existing pipes for capacity. So that's throughout. And once again, you can see the total cost there is about 30.4 million. But when we apply the benefit allocations and say, how much of this is because of growth? Uh, we ended with 21.5 million because of growth. Uh, Pontus Sewer, uh, we've got a number of projects, uh, some lift station upgrades and replacements, uh, a new forest main. Uh, we've got the, the biggest project by far is the wastewater treatment facility upgrades for phase one, phase two. And we subtract off the grants because, uh, when we're calculating our development cost charges, we need to subtract off the grants, and you have a grant there. And then also a portion of the cost for the wastewater treatment, uh, phase three A, which is in the future, but it's food would be able to start collecting funds for that future project now, even though it might be required beyond the 20-year period. Then you've also got some existing debt on past sewer projects. And once again, you can see we've got about $47.3 million in total cost. When we look at how much should be allocated to growth, it's, uh, about 20.3, 20.4 million. Uh, with parks, uh, we have some specific parks. When it comes to parks, uh, there's a limited range of the types of parks, facilities that can be paid for with DCCs. The Local Government Act sets out some, uh, specific criteria. So it's a little more limited in terms of what we can, uh, actually pay for with DCCs. So we've got some upgrades to specific parks, East Park, Queens Park, Loops East Lake Park, Nickel Road Park, and the Powerhouse Road Site. And there's also some trails and also some land acquisition for trail connections. And then some general park communities, including, uh, community gardens, benches, trees, and shade structures. And you can see here, we've got about 5.8 million in total cost, and of that allocated to growth is about 1.6, 1.7 million. So in summary, when you add them all up, you've got about $141 million of projects, and of that, about 63.3 is allocated to growth. So when we do our calculations, we say, okay, how much, uh, money, how much, what's the total value of all the projects allocated to growth? We divide that by the number of units that's projected over the next 20 years. And we do that infrastructure by infrastructure. So we've got transportation. So the transportation, uh, development cost charges, you can see there's the existing transportation DCCs and proposed transportation DCCs, and the difference in this column. I'm not going to go through all those numbers. You have them in your report. But if you take, I'd say a more common lot would be the low-density residential B in terms of lot sizes. The A is a quite a large lot. Uh, and you can see that the existing is, uh, uh, 1,714, and that's proposed to go to 10,170, so it's a difference of about $8,400 uh, increase for transportation. Uh, water similarly, if you look at the, uh, we've got the same range of categories, and you can see the residential B going from about 5,600 to over 15,000. So that's an increase of about, uh, $9,400 per, per lot. Uh, sewer DCCs, uh, same thing with the low-density residential B. You've got, once again, about, uh, 5,600, 5,700 dollars per lot existing, and that goes up to over 15,000. So about, uh, 9,600, uh, increase. With parks, you don't have a parks DCC in place right now, so the existing is zero. And the proposed is, is the, the new proposed development cost charge. And if you look at the low-density residential B, uh, that's about, uh, $1,260. And the difference, of course, is that same amount. Then when you add up all of the development cost charges and you, uh, combine them, you can see that that low-density residential B goes from an existing, uh, about 13,000 up to a proposed about, uh, 41,890. Uh, so it's a difference of about, uh, 28,800, or a percentage increase of, uh, over 200%. And you can see all of the various categories. There's some slight differences just because of, um, how they're calculated and equivalencies, but basically we're in the, in the 200 percentage range in terms of, uh, increase. So that's, uh, that's a significant, uh, increase, no doubt. Um, and actually, you might say, okay, well, how come the DCCs are going up so much? Or how come, when we calculate, these are the draft DCCs? Uh, and there's a number of reasons. One is, the old DCCs are based on, uh, the original DCC report was done in 2005, updated in 2008, just a minor change in 2021. So we're dealing with old updated costs, and so they don't reflect the new, new costs. We've also got new master plans that identify brand-new projects. Uh, some of the projects were the same as in the old, but most of them are, are new, kind of clear idea of where it want to go. Uh, another thing that happened was that the previous DCCs uh, projected much, much higher growth. Uh, they had, uh, and, and you can imagine back in 2005, 2006, 2007, things were like booming, and they're thinking, okay, things, you can be a lot, lot of units. So they took the cost and divided it by many units. So that kind of pushed down the actual development cost charge per unit. Here we've got, uh, realistic costs, cost based on, on solid master plans and realistic growth projections, and, uh, and giving it with, with these numbers. So in terms of council's role, uh, in this, I mean, your role is, is to think about everything, but a role that you have is in dealing with assist factors. And the assist factor is completely different from the benefit allocation. We've already figured out how much of the, how much percentages of the projects should be allocated to growth. Assist factor is a number that council can use to say, we're going to provide some assistance, some subsidy to development in order to bring down the development cost charges. Uh, now, of course, when you do that, the whole of the community pays for the assist factor. So if a water project gets a 50% assist, then, uh, ratepayers, taxpayers, or other parts of the budget have to pay for that, that 50%. The assist can vary by, uh, service, but they can't vary by area of the community. They can't have, you can't have a higher assist for, like, the downtown project, or a higher assist for, uh, residential or industrial. So we said, okay, what happens if you apply a number of different, uh, assist factor options? So we looked at, uh, 1%, it was assumed, that's the, the basic, uh, minimum amount. And that's what your assist factor is now, actually. It's 1%. Uh, and then we looked at 10%, 20%, and 30%. And you can see as we, uh, as we increase the percentage assist, the development cost charge goes down. So that low-density residential B, it goes from, uh, almost 42,001% to about 37,000 at 10%, about 32, 33,000 at 20% assist, and about 27,800, say 27, 28,000 at 30%. So you can see the assist comes down. And another way to think about it is, what's that due to the percentage increase? So if you move from a 1% assist to a 30% assist, instead of having over 200% increase, you've got about 100% or so increase. But that doesn't come without, uh, kind of a cost or an impact. When you look at the impact of the assist factor, it, it, uh, costs, uh, you, you have to make up the difference, basically. And so we calculated the differences, uh, that have to be made up. At 1%, it's $620,000. At 10%, it's, uh, 6.2 million. At 20, 20%, it's 12.4 million. And at 30%, it's 18.6 million. Now, that's over 20 years, so you're stretching that out over 20 years. Uh, and if you look at it on a kind of per annual basis for each year over the 20 years, although in essence, it's, it's going to go up and down because of, uh, what you're actually building. But if it was, you can see that at 10%, you're looking to find $310,000 to support that assist uh, in your budget or to generate more money. Or at 20%, it's 620,000. Or 30%, it's 930,000. So you, that money has to come from, from somewhere. Now, another, uh, quick thing, and I'm going to go through this relatively quickly, is, uh, comparisons with other communities. Now, comparison, every community is unique. Some communities have long stretches of roads, some communities are compact. So it's, it's sometimes really not fair to compare, but we still like to compare and say, hey, how are our rates compared to others? Even though we have unique situations. Some are quite out of date, some are new, uh, in terms of the updates. Um, at the last meeting, there was a request to add all the resort communities, so we put, got them all on there. I think one isn't, uh, I think Antiquity isn't an actual resort community. And then there's a couple, uh, Rossland and Kimberly don't have development cost charges. They negotiate developers on a case-by-case basis. Anyways, you can see that your proposed DCC would be definitely higher than any of the resort communities. Your existing is kind of in the, in the mid-range. Of course, some of these, uh, are, are quite out of date. You've got, uh, you know, some that are done 10, even 20 years ago. Uh, you know, you've got the female, uh, 2010 Whistler was done in the year 2000. Uh, you know, you've got Vailmont 2004, it's 20 years ago. So some of these haven't been updated. And I know that some are working on updating theirs, like the Upland and Golden are working on updating theirs. So no doubt, those were the increase. Some other comparisons would be medium-sized interior communities, uh, places like Lake Country, West Colona, Vernon, Camlins, Salmon Arm. Um, and you can see that the proposed, uh, is at the higher end of the range, but not the highest. Uh, Lake Country is updating theirs, so they've got a higher one. Uh, I know that Salmon Arm, even though it shows that it's being kind of low, and theirs were done in 2007, they're updating theirs right now, so that'll go up. And yet another comparison is large drilling communities. So you've got, uh, Kelowna and Burnaby and Surrey and Coquitlam. And there, you can see that the, uh, the proposed DCC is kind of at the lowish mid-range of those, uh, amounts. And you might ask yourself, okay, maybe you don't compare yourself to, uh, you know, Coquitlam or Kelowna. But is it any cheaper to build, uh, infrastructure, roads, sewer, water systems here in Revelstone compared to Kelowna or to Abbotsford? Probably not. Uh, so in some ways, it's, and, and these, a lot of these have been recently updated. Uh, these communities, they updated on a pretty regular basis. So those are just some comparisons. You know, you don't want to get too tied up into comparisons because, you know, every community is different and unique in their, in their needs. We also did a quick calculation of the foregone revenue. Uh, the revenue that would have been collected if you had adopted the DCCs proposed in 2018. So we looked at 2019, 2020. Oh, we have two D, and it's about $6.2 million that, uh, additional money that would have been collected, uh, if the increases in 2018, which were significant increases, um, had been, had been adopted. So then, on to the next steps. Um, I think the next steps, in my mind, are to determine if council wants to have these proposed draft DCCs, uh, put on the website prior to engagement. Um, or if council wants to have more time to, to consider and discuss these draft DCCs, possibly making changes before that, uh, information goes on to the website. Um, one other factor is I'm heading off for about a, a month and a bit, uh, on a, uh, uh, kind of camping, backpacking, mountain biking trip in Colorado. And so I'm gone for like about a month. And so I thought, okay, while I'm gone, we could have all this information, and I have it all prepared, ready for staff to place it on the website for people to start thinking about it and commenting on it, and give people some time to look at it before we come back and then perhaps have some engagement sessions and say, you know, okay, you've had some time to look at it, think, what are your thoughts? What are your concerns? So those are some, uh, some, and, and then after that, uh, we also want to refer to the ministry because give them a chance to be thinking about it early, uh, start engagement. You can look at the engagement, uh, results, see what people have said. Uh, then we need to have a final report and a bylaw and a submission to the, uh, to the ministry after three readings, and then approval of the inspector of municipality can take two to three months. So if everything kind of goes according to schedule, we could have it, uh, approval by March 2025. And hopefully, three readings before the end of the year, that'd be great. So that's my presentation. Now, time to answer any questions?
Thank you, Joel. Appreciate that. Uh, counsel, any questions for Mr. Short regarding DCCs?
Do we even plug this to let?
Definitely.
I don't have those questions, I understand.
Sure.
Because it was presented at the Public Infrastructure Committee in much more depth. So I think we could understand.
Absolutely.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Souls. Uh, just a question through to staff. Uh, when we're talking about assist factors, a 1% tax increase on our tax base, what does that bring for revenue for the city?
Through the chair, right now, 1% for going into 2025 is equivalent to $160,000 for taxation. But please keep in mind, some of these run through the utilities, and 1% is about $25,000 to $30,000 a year in revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Cherry?
We're, we have competing views here. Are you sure you're going to leave? Thanks, Mr. Souls. Uh, I was hoping through the chair, can you explain how grants affect DCCs? For example, if we're, if we're already, sorry, if we're going to be, uh, collecting DCCs, how do grants get funded into that or equated into that?
Yeah, so if we know we have a grant, we subtract off the grant amount. So then what we're dealing with is the post-grant amount. Now, sometimes you have projects and you're hoping you're going to get a grant, but you don't know. So the, the ministry is very strict about this. You can't say, oh, we anticipate getting a grant, so we'll kind of work in the grant. And that's going to be the number that we deal with. You have to assume that you're not getting a grant. And then if you do get a grant, then you're going to do a recalculating and say, oh, we got this grant. Now we can, we calculate the numbers and move forward.
I'd say you wouldn't be giving any DCC funds back to the residents then.
I don't think you could.
No, I don't think you can either. Uh, there was a pretty high allocation to the wastewater treatment facility. And, uh, I'm just curious why that is. And there's been complaints about the facility going back from the 90s. I was hoping maybe staff could weigh in on that. I was hoping maybe staff could weigh in on that.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to it. So the wastewater treatment facility, we've got, it's it's based on the service population in the liquid waste management plant. So about sixty-five percent of the service population in the liquid waste management plant is existing and about thirty-five percent is new. So that's the basis of it. Now, there's a lot of different philosophies that you could apply, but that's a very sound philosophy. We're saying, okay, this liquid waste management plan and this wastewater treatment plant phase one and phase two, as we're looking at the population it's going to serve over this projection period, it's sixty-five percent existing, thirty-five percent new. So that's what we base it on.
Gotcha. Slightly different topic, but I'm going to keep going if that's all right, Chair. What are the benefits versus negatives of going to a cost-per-square-foot method for low-density residential?
Ah, yeah, there's some pros and cons. We've got kind of like an in-between sort of approach, like it's based on parcel size or the multi-family units are based on different ranges. Like, basically, if you've got the, the largest is, say, a hundred square meters, which is like three-plus bedrooms, then we've got like sixty-five to a hundred square meters, which is around the two-bedroom range, then we've got like under sixty-five square meters, is kind of like one bedroom smaller. So we've, we've put it in these ranges, which makes it a bit easier. If you do it based on square foot, specifically square foot, it's a bit more complicated when you calculate it, you need some very specific rules on what you include and what you don't include. Do you include the garage? Do you include an unfinished basement? You know, are there various places that could be built, a mezzanine, you know, are those, you know, how do you calculate the square foot? Whereas if you've got kind of a range, it's easier to fit inside that range. Or if you've got a parcel size, you're going to know exactly how big that parcel is. Another thing to think about is that, another way to do it is you could do it based on square footage of, say, single-family or low-density residential when it's constructed. Unfortunately, you don't get the money, the municipality doesn't get the funds to service it until the unit is built versus when the actual subdivision is built and you have to, you know, there's like, there's like roads there, there's, you know, water lines, pipes, everything has to be, you know, available to service that development. So most communities do, say, low-density residential subdivisions at the subdivision stage, because then they get the funds right away. But there are a few communities that do it at building permit. And it is an option for some.
Can you comment on how their success is? The ones that the communities that do?
I think, the, the, the one that I know of is, is Ferney. And another slight problem with it, and I think some communities have, have not done it because this is the issue, is that when you're collecting a subdivision, you're dealing with a kind of a development entity or a landowner who's kind of working this into their pro forma, and and they're it depends on the sophistication of the developer, but they're prepared to pay these costs. Versus when you do it at, at building permit, sometimes you've got, you know, somebody who's bought a lot and they want to build a house for their family. And they come along and they go, oh, okay, I'm going to build my house, and come in, they say, oh, oh, by the way, it's another twenty or thirty or forty thousand dollars you have to pay for DCCs, and then you get that kind of over and over and over again in a twenty lot subdivision. Sometimes you have builders that are building homes and so they're familiar with this, but you might have a lot of sort of new homeowners or people who just want to buy a lot and build a house, who will perhaps have some concerns about having to pay it at that stage. Even though perhaps it gets wrapped in the cost of the lot, that would be what it might.
Thank you. The reason I ask that is that the fundamental fairness issue when it comes to two different types of builds on a same-size lot, you know, someone that can afford to build a small home, and only a small home, getting hit with the same price with, say, one or two washrooms as somebody who's building a six-thousand-square-foot home on the same property.
Yes.
You know, someone that could probably afford to pitch in more and definitely has a higher usage for many of the issues, or sort of many of the items identified in the DCC bylaws, or sorry, the DCC rates as proposed. So I just wanted to say that. I'm also wondering if you can comment on the growth factor of our community and how that affects DCC rates? And the reason I'm asking is, I fear that if we set this too high, we're going to affect our growth rate significantly, that'll basically have many of these projects just fall back on the taxpayer anyways.
Yeah, well, that's a, that's a difficult question to answer. Like, if you're asking me, how do I think a high DCC will impact your growth? That is, so we've, we've done quite a number of development cost charges. We've faced this concern before, but like I say, every community is unique. We have looked at, we, we did do a bit of an analysis and say, hey, let's graph, you know, DCC increases with the impact of growth rates. And we did that for a few communities, and there was like zero correlation. It was like, you know, you might increase the DCC and some, some communities actually that their growth just takes off, and others, it makes no difference. In general, it seems to me that there's broader socioeconomic impacts. You know, you've got interest rates, market demands, world forces that are kind of much bigger than the development cost charge is as a kind of like a impediment or deterrent to, to growth. We do hear quite often that, oh, when we introduce these new DCCs, either brand-new DCC or DCC increase, that development's going to slow down. But we haven't really seen, like, strong correlation evidence of, of that. But saying that, each community is unique, and I don't have sort of a definitive study that says, yes, you, you're, you know, you increase your DCCs by a hundred percent, your growth will go down by, you know, two percent or something. I, I can't say that at all. And I don't know if anybody can, because it's each, each community is unique, right?
That's fair. How about this? When preparing this document, did you take into consideration provincial legislation that changed allowing for four units of housing on one lot?
Yeah, that's, so we've got accessory dwelling units, secondary schools being allowed. It, it is kind of a bit of an evolving thing, because, I mean, it depends partly on what's the uptake going to be in a community? Like, how many lots that actually put, you know, an extra one, two, or three units on a lot? And I think that's something that needs to be monitored as, as time goes on. But it's definitely something that, that we consider, particularly the accessory dwelling units, like, oh, there's going to be some more accessory dwellings. And there's definitely some thinking that we might want to do in terms of how we, how we charge the DCCs. That comes to a little later in terms of when we're actually writing the bylaw, but we might need to do some thinking about that, too. Like, for example, if somebody's building an extra, an extra accessory dwelling unit, that might be quite clear. But what if they're tearing down a house and that's a single house, and they're going to build like three townhouses close together? You want to be really clear about, is that getting charged, you know, three single attached, or is it getting charged, you know, for the multi? For sure, if somebody has a lot, and there's a house on it, and you tear down that house, you get a credit for that lot, that house that was there already.
The one unit of housing?
They've already paid.
Yeah. I believe how it's credited through our system is you get a credit for one unit of housing, not the actual amount, the dollar amount and the change?
Yeah, and that's how it should be, should be for the, the actual unit itself at whatever time the DCC is being applied for.
Okay, and then with that being said, all of that, is this more of an evolving document then? Over the next little bit, or is this a finalized document that we have to deliberate over the next coming months and give to the public?
This is the draft development cost charges. There are sometimes changes as we move along through the process, maybe based on your thoughts, based on engagement. It's a, you know, kind of a discussion with the community. So I'd say more evolving than final, because what we do have, though, is we have, we know we have great master plans that say, here are the things that need to be built, and we have a pretty good idea of growth. So the, so the key factors are, oh, do you adjust the assist factor? As a council, you can make that decision. Are there some projects that are maybe kind of at the very end of the projection period, and you can say, ah, well, maybe, maybe those aren't really necessary within this twenty-year period, you can maybe move, move them out. That's kind of more of a, sort of a technical thought than but, yeah, there's more discussion to go. For sure, this is a draft.
I appreciate that. I won't take up too much more of your time. I'll just make a little comment that, as it's currently written, we're going to see a lot of three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-square-meter lots. So thank you for everything, for the presentation.
Counsel Orlando?
Your worship, thank you. Yeah, my, my question is focused as well on the process moving forward with this, as we just heard it's a draft document. Myself, I want to get this finalized, and my focus is on the actual process and procedure. For example, we were hearing about options to present to the public before or after an upcoming vacation. I do have sort of more technical questions, such as if there are amendments or changes or suggestions, or if you know, there are tweaks that people want to make, how is that actually going to happen before or after we present it? It's a bit unclear to me at this point. But to summarize, yeah, I want to get this completed. I want to move it forward as, as soon as possible in an organized and orderly way. And so I'm seeking just more specifics on next steps, when they're going to happen, when decisions are made, and how the communication towards those decisions are going to be happening. Thank you.
Mr. Short, comment?
So th- there's a number of options. We could, one option is, we have this information, you know, presentation, the background report, we could put that on the website and say, here's, here's some information on the draft and get the development community, the public, an ability to, to take a look at that. And then our plan would be that once I'm back, we can have an actual in-person session with the development community, with the public, and answer questions and gather feedback. So that's one option. And then we would take that feedback to you, and then we probably have to go through another iteration and say, okay, well, there's concerns about this. How can we change? You know, maybe we do have, go a little deeper into thinking about charging based on the the size of the home being built at, at that time, for example, might be something to think about, or also thinking about the assist factor, you know, or, you know, part of the concerns there. So that'll provide a bit of, bit of time and some, some feedback that we can then bring back to you. Another option would be, you can say, well, you know what, I think we, as a council, need to think more about this, and so we could do some more work back and forth before we say, okay, to the general public. I mean, this is, this would be public information anyways, because it's in, in front of the community as a whole, but there could be some more discussion back and forth that I have to wait until, like, I come back, so delays things a little bit, but if that's what you want to do, that's, that's good, too. But in essence, we want to make sure, because council, it's your bylaw, you're, you're going to be giving this three readings if it proceeds, so you need to be comfortable. So we need to, you know, work on it to a point where you can go, okay, I'm good with it, or I'm accepting the reasonable compromise that we're
So I'm going to ask staff, if we were to put this on talk Revelstone for I mean, do an engagement that way, put it the way it is now, for people to respond to in, in whatever way they feel, do you feel there's benefit to that? Mr. Black, any comment?
Your worship, thank you. All of council, I do believe there's benefit in rolling this out. I'm not quite comfortable at this point with rolling it out without the coordination of our communication staff and admin staff to make sure that we have the bandwidth to do it properly. If possible, I would like to see this rolled out as quickly as we can, but given the workloads that the comms folks have, I'm guessing we're probably looking at a couple of weeks before we'd have a presentation capable to go on to talk Revelstone for the city webpage. But I do feel that it's very important that the community get their teeth into this as soon as they can, so that we can get that feedback. This is a, a, probably the biggest project that the city will be undertaking for quite, quite some long time, and so it's important to get it right. But we've got to get it done as soon as we can, because I think Council Palmer mentioned at our last meeting that as we are right now, we're foregoing about a hundred and two-hundred-thousand-plus dollars in potential relative to projects per month right now. And so that's quite significant when you multiply that by twelve.
Counsel Orlando?
Your worship, thank you. Director Black said exactly what I was going to say, that we should consult with communication staff on resources, on what what they're going to do in order to do it right. Yeah, so we're, we're on the same wavelength there.
Counsel Paul? Thank you, Mayor Solz. Just based on the discussion here, contemplate, and I won't go to the motion right now, but I'm contemplating your motion recommendation to council, which would be in a couple of weeks, or the draft bylaw, DCC bylaw, based on today's presentation or public consultation, and based on the one percent assist factor be recommended to council. And then that would give staff that two weeks to figure that out, the talk, you know, figure out that infrastructure, the communications infrastructure. I am going to just go on the, sort of the, yeah, we have on the urgency of getting this done, the history where we've been, and I know the council's heard me say it before, I am going to take the opportunity to, to repeat it. So DCCs has been a very, very high priority for this council, the previous council, the council before that. That's, so we're talking ten years, so ten years ago, there is was already in silly season for election, DCCs were being talked about, and it was a commitment with that council. And they wrestled with it for four years, and at eleventh hour, it collapsed. Six years ago, silly season again. And Mayor Solz, you, yourself and I were a part of, part of that. Everybody was promising we're going to get DCCs done. We got a minor little inflationary thing done during that term on that council, but it never really, the real thing never got done. Two years ago, everybody in this room, committee, was electioneering, we had the community sessions, DCC question came up, everybody said, yeah, we're going to get the DCCs done. That was two years ago. In January of twenty twenty-three, we put it in our strategic plan, DCCs high priority. And then also in that time, the engineering department, under Steve Black, did a whole host of incredible number of master plans to feed information for various reasons, for applying in the future, but it gave that platform of all this information, the, the numbers that we needed for our future growth. We also did the OCP, major, major thing with the OCP, established growth, growth rates. So all that's been discussed ad nauseam over the last six years and done really well with lots of public consultation. And so we created this platform that we could hand this to Mr. Short, and it would be really easy just to proceed. Other than, DCCs are always controversial. And the reason they're controversial is because it's saying, who's going to pay for the development that happens in the community? On one hand, you say, is the develop, development community going to pay for that extra, not all the other stuff that's going on, that extra, that's a direct result of that development? Are they going to pay for it? Or is the taxpayer, existing taxpayer, going to pay for it? And many communities land on the one percent assist rate, which we did back in two thousand and five. It wasn't really one percent at the end of the day, as we've heard just in the last six years, if we really had that one percent assist rate, we've lost six million dollars that the taxpayer is going to pay.
Right.
And so that carries on, and even once we get this done, there's that if we're, if we're good and keep the inflationary aspects and review on a regular basis, we'll keep up with, hopefully, close to that one percent. But it's inevitable, the community will be assisting more than one percent. Just, that's just based on history, that's where it goes, arguably. So over the next twenty years, based on all the master plans, and assuming that our growth rate is a reasonable growth rate, and we're close to that, the sixty-three-million dollars, who's going to pay for it? The development community or the taxpayers? And every month that we delay, then we're not answering that question, and it's landing on the tax. And every month that we delay, then we're not answering that question and it's landing on the taxpayers. So that's the urgency. It'll never, ever be perfect, you know, square footage, this or that. I've got a consultant with years and years, decades actually, of experience doing this stuff and seeing the controversy, seeing the failure of communities not getting it done, spending a lot of money on consulting these. We won't get it perfect. So now we've got probably one of the best, I think probably one of the best foundations to go to the community because of all our master plans, because of the new OCP, because of the good resources that we have. And so it's important to get this in front and then we can wrestle with that. So based on that, I'm going to put a motion on the table that a draft by DCC bylaw for public consultation based on a 1% assist factor be published.
No recommendations? No recommendations?
Well, that is it, for publishing the information for consultation and a 1% assist factor.
Mr. Short comment?
Comment is, so what we've got now is the draft calculations of the DCCs, but we don't actually have the bylaw. The bylaw requires more discussion with development services, like the technical wording, but it could well be the actual DCCs themselves, the draft.
Yeah, so that, I'll adjust that, yeah, that's right. It's basically this report, so the draft, the draft DCC, or it's actually a report.
Yeah, there's a discussion paper.
Discussion paper as published in front of us.
Tim, Tim could probably.
Okay, that's good.
How about that the Committee of the Whole referred then to council that a draft development cost charges by law be developed using the project list presented at the September 12th, 2024, Committee of the Whole meeting, using a 1% assist factor?
Mr. Short?
Except we're not at the bylaws, Steve, yet.
Oh, yes.
We got the draft numbers. We have the numbers, but the bylaw, because the bylaw takes a bit more work.
Yes.
Development services or some, some.
So how about the draft, the draft project lists be presented for public engagement?
So we're not going to put with the 1%?
With the 1%.
Do you hear that, guys?
Yes.
Um, sorry, further to that, Mr. Short has prepared all of the text that could go onto a Talk Rebel Stope page. I can speak on behalf of Francesca. That portion could be done within what she's capable of right now with her other timelines. The question is if you want increased engagement, including like public engagement and stuff like that. If it's just on Talk Rebel Stope, that's not a problem at all, we can do that right away.
And I would suggest, Mayor and council, that this would just be the first step. There is going to be public engagement. There will be darts thrown at staff at the rec center and maybe even the grocery store.
And council.
And I am counting, but we are.
Little darts or long darts?
They both are. However, we need to get this information to the public because it is significant. It's a big. And the meaning for this project is huge for our community and for the future of our community. So rolling these project numbers out, how they were based upon master plan.
Can we get back to the, there's a motion?
Yeah, I just want to get back to the motion. So you were going to speak to the motion or?
How make sure we leave out this motion to see if we can get a second or?
So this is the motion I have, that the draft project list be released for public engagement using a 1% assist factor.
Are you okay with that?
I think Matt, Council Chair, maybe has a little slight.
Can we remove the terminology of 1% assist factor and let the community see the entirety of the document?
Absolutely.
I'm okay with that, yeah, I'm okay with that because we're at this.
Mr. Short is not okay with that.
Generally, okay, except, so we got the draft project list. What about the draft development cost charges? Like the actual charges?
Yes.
Not true, okay.
Yes. That the development cost charges be established based on the project list presented for public engagement. Period.
Got it. You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with it because we're at this sort of pre-public consultation process. So nailing it down absolutely perfect isn't essential. Except for we can't refer to bylaw because we're not at that stage. And because this is a recommendation to council, there's two weeks for staff to scramble and figure out, okay, what can we actually get done? And they'll report to us in two weeks' time.
Yep, good. And Matt, you're going to second it, is that correct?
Yes, I just want to make sure. Would you prefer to read that out? Or should it say something along the lines of development cost charges update as presented at this?
I would like it to be more specific. So that the draft development cost charges be released for public engagement based on the project lists presented at the September 12th, Committee of the Whole meeting.
And just to confirm, all of the, everything we saw today?
Yes.
Thank you. That was seconded, yes.
Okay, you're comfortable with that, Mr. Short? All right, Council Orlando, you had your hand up.
Yes, sorry, just, sorry, it was a bit back, just out of curiosity, the bylaw development phase, a question of staff, the consultant is how long do you anticipate that to take? And what about the relative wisdom of proceeding to that phase? And our ability to seek input at that phase and also make corresponding changes that may arise as a result of that input after the bylaw is developed? So I'm just basically seeking thoughts and wisdom on engaging in the process we are embarking on prior to authoring the bylaw or after authoring the bylaw.
Usually we, we present the draft numbers, we like development cost charges, and then there's, you know, some back and forth to identify how, some of the details with respect to how we want to implement this in terms of, is it very square foot or is it by, you know, parcel area? Then usually we get all those details settled and then we write the bylaw. And the bylaw basically just does what we've decided to do. There could be a one extra due note because, I mean, you are actually giving that bylaw first, second and third reading before it gets sent off. So then that gives you an opportunity to say, oh, wait a minute, I don't like how this is worded. And that does happen, there's some minor tweaks, but basically we get the direction figured out, then we write the bylaw. And the bylaw itself is relatively simple. It's only a few pages long, like maybe four or five pages and it's got this schedule on the back of it that has all the charges. So that's usually how we do it.
All right, Council Palmer?
Yeah, and I think we're probably close to all the questions, but one question through to the consultant. When are you back from holidays?
October 18th.
Okay. And what are?
Go ahead.
What are you doing on October 19th? So I think this is all presented, the question is there, I think, and I'm just sort of these sort of questions on these sort of timing and staff might want to look at this, how that's presented on Talk Rebel Stope. Quite often there's a sequence, so there's this initial engagement. There's at some point the development community specifically. There's the council's, to wrestle with the final bylaw assist factor, that kind of thing. Then the bylaw development. And then there's a tiny bit more public engagement, I think, because of the bylaw and getting those three things done, so it'd be nice to have that on that webpage. Let that might actually look like that's for staff and the consultant. So yeah, because that's going to be a fundamental question.
Perfect, good. Council Orlando, you have a question on the motion or process?
Uh, yeah, just, you know, Palmer's statement, I really want to move forward. I want to bring the DCC bylaw update to conclusion. It's been a lot of work to develop fundamentals of all of the master planning necessary to go into this, just to sit for crystal clarity of the process two weeks from now. This is going to be back at council, obviously we're at committee right now. So council will make the decision to then go forward to a public presentation of the draft, including all the documents that are public today. And just a little request is that at that time, if staff, communication staff could also just make us aware of their abilities. So the expectation might not be that the next day after that decision is made, it's up on the thing, maybe they made a little bit more time and resources. And also it would be great if possible to see some options for what they're thinking of doing. Just given the historical context of and experiences in other communities, it's wise to make sure everyone's up to speed so that we can communicate effectively to the whole community about what we're proposing.
Appreciate that. All right, so there is a recommendation or motion on the table to recommend this to council. I will call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, thank you so much. All right, thank you, Mr. Short.
Thank you.
Black, appreciate it. Let's move on to 12A correspondence. We have a letter from Rebel Stope Boxing Club. I'd like to request partial use of a piece of property the city has, looks like Century Valen Building. Many comments from council, Council Chair.
Uh, there is an error myself in the document, I believe it's 227 Fourth Street West.
Yeah, you're correct.
Just wanted to make sure that's amended.
And so I'm going to ask for staff's comment on this. Mr. Natto, do you have any comments?
Through your worship, I only have information on the condition of the building, which I think would be more appropriate for the director to speak on. But I do have a copy of the email that outlines certain improvements that would be required in order for the building to be used by an organization or group. Currently, the facility is used for storage. A lot of it is flux and building storage, so there's components for the aquatic center in there. The building is fully utilized for storage purposes. If we were to have the building occupied, significant renovations would need to be undertaken in order to make it a suitable space for any club or group to use it. I do have preliminary costs, but not sure if Mr. Black wants to get into that or not.
Okay, we'll wait and see if he's going to come back in the room. Council Palmer?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Solz. You know, for sure, we would, I think as council, we would like to help out groups as much as we can. The boxing club has been important, we've heard about that to the community. We have many, many clubs that are important to the community and we do have a process for providing some assistance in that setting, given to various clubs. We had some of the questions about, you know, how many people are using that? I think that needs to be in context of many, many, many other other groups. So I certainly wouldn't be prepared to go really anywhere with this right now. Recognizing it's a challenge, other groups have found revenue sources within the community growing in various ways. Whether there's opportunity for tourism funds and things like that, others have leveraged, it may not meet the criteria. Then my other comment is just on the Century Valen Building. There's been many requests over the last at least 15 years for using of that. If I recall correctly, the substantial upgrades is a pretty big cost. And that will be pulling from other things, we're serious about multiplex center. Maybe that's the timing, but it's a long way to wait. So those would be my concerns and it's not at all that I would like to help them out. The city has helped them in the way that's, you know, I'm a little bit concerned just on how some parts of the community are saying, okay, well, we included them out. Well, no, it was, if anything, we were in error by facilitating a building that was inappropriate for many, many years. And so I think in general, the city has helped a lot over the years. So those would be my concerns and I know they're hard to articulate, but I just wanted to make sure that that's stated there.
I appreciate that comment. I don't disagree with you and I look at it and see, you know, it's good to help all of these community clubs in whatever degree, but at some point we have to look at really what is our capacity? And we look at it from our physical capacity for our buildings, what's going to be the best for then moving forward? And then what's going to happen from the financial perspective? And how are we going to recoup that money over a period of time if we're going to go that route? So I'll let you speak one last time and then ask to Mr. Black if he has any comment.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I think you articulated some, so there's the budgetary thing, there's all those kind of things. There's one other thing that we comes up pretty much every meeting, staff resources. So suddenly the recreation director's tasked with that, what's falling off the plate?
Good, absolutely great point in it, I appreciate that. So Council Charity, your comment?
Thanks, I saw, just prior to staff weighing in. Council, I was calling to Council, and Council Palmer did mention that this building's been requested to be used numerous times over the last 15 years. Maybe it's time we take a look at actually utilizing the building for more than storage for multiple different groups, not just one in this case, but what would that look like, especially when we're going to talk about costs and what the building needs? I know our request here is for one specific group, but maybe this is a resource that we should start utilizing better in the future. And that's just a, just an open comment.
Good. Council Palmer, then I'll get Mr. Black.
I don't think we want to drill down too deep. The question I'll ask is if that's the case, then staff needs to look at the new facility for storage that needs to be built.
Yeah, exactly. Council has talked about this in the past as far as storage and, you know, we looked at CCANS and, you know, public works yards and that sort of thing. We don't have the capacity or the space for those things in those places. So, you know, it's a big to do. But Mr. Black, do you have any? Any comment or do you want me to comment on on this request or that building, Century Valen?
So Mayor, you're giving me the option not to talk to this?
Yeah, absolutely, you can tell me to bugger up, but we'll probably still come back to you and say, hey, you got to win.
Through your worship as a council, I believe first off, the facility itself does not lend itself to being suitable for anybody to occupy it right now because of the lighting, the lack of exit space, lack of washroom facilities. As Mr. Natto has indicated, I believe that storage is an issue. Now, my team has a master plan put together for the public works yard with funding that has not yet been put into our long-term financial plan, I believe, is that correct? That we don't have it, you know, put the parks or the public works master plan into our long-term financial plan?
We currently have the first phase, which is coverage storage down at the Public Works Yard. However, the master plan has not been brought forward to council yet to review. And once it has been reviewed and endorsed and full, we'll report further spending packages for council to review. However, in last year's budget process, we did include the Phase One coverage.
And that's for coming year 25?
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, I think, twenty-five.
And so until, thank you. And until that time, we're unable to relocate the stuff that's in that building because we do not have a separate location that can take that equipment right now. And that equipment is generally used on a regular basis by the rec center. And so it's very convenient for us to. the rec center, and so it's very convenient for us to, to keep it there. Now, convenience is one thing. However, we just don't have a, a suitable location to relocate that equipment to provide a space for the boxing club, nor does the space need uh code requirements for public use.
Okay, thank you for that comment. I think that at this point, we'll just receive the letter and we're not going to do anything further at that point. Uh, Counselor Stapler?
I just, uh, I'm sorry, through the chair to Ms. Donato, I do believe you mentioned earlier in the conversation that you had a preliminary estimate on how much it would cost to bring that building up to code. And part of, part of the, part of my problem that I have with this is that we're utilizing a building, I don't know what the value would be on B C assessment. Somewhere to the tune of a million plus dollars, I would imagine. We're using it for storage. Uh, I think that's kind of a convenience factor, and I think it's one of those things that we all kind of, you know, I've got a storage unit in the big A, I'm spending twenty bucks a month on it. I've been doing it for last eight years. It's probably far exceeded the value of the things I'm storing in there. Um, so, right, uh, I, I, and I think it's just kind of like par for the course. Um, now, you know, I, I think making a, a wholesome decision based on economics and how much it would cost us to, to get this stuff out of there. Um, I'd like to see that, that building space be better utilized. And I think part of my concern is that we have a trend of, of undervaluing or not necessarily utilizing city land to the best of its abilities. Um, so that's my comment. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, that land was purchased uh with potential for something else at one point and and, and utilized anything further, but um, I'm going to go back to my comment. We'll uh, we see this letter and um that'll be the end of it for this point, and stop. So Counselor Orlando, you have your hand up.
Are you worship? Thank you. Um, just maybe a general question of uh staff, more park staff. Um, you know, we have a lot of sports clubs in the community that do a lot of heavy lifting for the community um in terms of running organizations, uh fundraising, et cetera. Um, certainly, the uh city through our Parks and Rec Department is involved in supporting uh, some of them, many of them, uh, uh, a lot of them, not by percentage, but you know, in fact, a lot in terms of provision of facilities uh indoors and outdoors as well. I guess my question is, um, uh, what resources do we have or what resources would staff recommend? Um, for a club that is in the position uh that they're in right now, the boxing club needing a facility uh to um go through the process of engaging with uh, uh organizational development, finding grant funding, uh, building their uh building their capacity, perhaps partnering with other similar clubs, be it M M A clubs, et cetera, who might have uh co-use of the facility. Um, what, what can we offer uh in, in terms of support or what, what, what policy and programs do we have uh in terms of offering support in that journey to, to find a home?
Mr. Natto, do you want to make comment?
Your worship? Currently, we don't have any programs or policies in place to assist with that. Um, we do reach out and encourage groups to work together. Um, this particular group, I have asked for a business plan to see what their future looks like, what are they aiming for? I haven't received one um to date or anything like that. A lot of groups share spaces. It becomes problematic when a group needs to have a fixed space and leave their equipment in place so that they can utilize it for their practices on a regular basis. That is one of the challenges with some sporting groups. Um, I know that we, there are some different access to grants that we potentially look at, but without a space, that really becomes challenging for a group to apply for grants when they don't have a dedicated space. So I really think it starts with finding that dedicated space. And I'm not entirely sure on which space they researched and who they reached out to. I haven't had that conversation with them. So that's probably something we could look at and try to assist in brainstorming different venues for them. Other than that, I don't know what else I could offer at this point in terms of the facilities that we manage in the space that we have.
Okay, thank you for that comment. I think that's the thing, if, if you can uh connect with them, then see if there's a way to help them move forward with uh, you know, maybe there's groups in the community that can lead them through business plan, that sort of thing, so that they become uh able to uh look at things from a little different perspective. I think that would be good. So we'll receive the letter, and uh I'll, I'll leave it at you at this point. Go from there, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. Um, so I think we should keep in mind to all of council and the public that the B C infrastructure, so B C Canada Infrastructure Program is extended ten more years. Um, there's several streams. It's a thirty-three billion dollar commitment. It's, you know, it's uh available to all municipalities. There's a green infrastructure stream, there's a public transit stream, and there's community culture recreation infrastructure stream. And there's also another community called Rural and Northern Communities Infrastructure Stream. That's for remote communities north of certain parallel. Um, under Community Culture Recreation Infrastructure Stream, for the next ten years, we would be eligible to apply for community culture and recreation facilities, whether they're new or uh renovated, proposed. Of course, we have eyed that program for our new multipurpose facility. However, under that stream, there is a renovation component where you can take existing community space, whether it's a fixed asset or lands, and convert it to community use. So in answering the question about available funds, that's our most notable one. And that's just been renewed, renewed for another ten years. Thank you.
Okay, so then as far as applying for that fund, is that something that economic development would look at or how does that?
Well, the city of Rebel Stoke would look at it through our different committees and departments, but right now, that is earmarked, of course, for our large projects. Um, when it comes under the particular stream for community infrastructure, the multipurpose would probably be our first priority. But there is also a renovation component when it comes to rec facilities that we can look at, and uh the city would lead the application and involve the appropriate committees.
Okay, appreciate it. I'll leave that with you then. All right, um, I'm going to move on to communications, uh, R C M P's second quarter community policing report. I don't see any uh members of R C M P here. Any comments from council on that report? Counsel, uh, Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, just a comment, I don't know if we can get action inside. Pretty cool, but it'd sort of be nice to see just the annual over several, several years, see where the trends are going. So this is great on an annual basis, but to see them all multi-year being nice.
Maybe we can approach uh Staff Sergeant Dawes on that, so.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, I would like to uh move back in camera, proceed to section ninety point one K of the community charter. Someone want to make that motion for me? Counselor Devlin, Counselor Stapler, all in favor? Motion's carried. Let's take a few minute break, and we'll come back in camera.